The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tracy, could you call the roll?
Sure. Mr. King?
Here.
Mayor Mariko?
Here.
Councilwoman Cole?
Here.
Chief Ackerman?
Here.
Ms. Triforis? Mr. Solowski? Mr. Bolero?
Here.
Mr. Diaz Pizito?
Here.
And Mr. Morley?
Here.
Please read the sunshine law.
In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, which went into effect January 19th, 1976, I hereby state that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows: posting of the notice on the bulletin board outside these chambers, mailing of the notice to the Ridgewood News, and filing of the notice outside the borough clerk's office on January 17th, 2025. In addition to the foregoing, a notice was posted on the bulletin board in January of 2025, setting forth the regularly scheduled meetings for the year. A copy of the schedule was also published in the Bergen Record on January 15th, 2025.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the January 7th, 2025 regular meeting?
I'm moved.
Who is that?
Who's that?
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Second?
One second. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mayor Mariko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Chief Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Solowski? Oops, sorry, I'm gonna cross him off. Mr. Bolero?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz Pizito?
Yes.
Mr. Morley?
Yes.
Um, yeah, you might as well wait for one second. Or they can start coming up to, let's see, it's usually four, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll wait a second. Or three.
Okay, there's no old business. As far as new business, I think at the last week, last month, we were talking about maybe setting up a couple committees, but we'll keep that discussion until after the presentations. So first, first item on the agenda is a middle school, high school playground courtesy review. An applicant is seeking a site plan approval to install a pre-K outdoor playground.
If you could turn on the, oh, you did already. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Thompson. I'm a senior associate with Parrot Samsen Architects out of Rockaway. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Colleague to my right is Mr. James Canelus. He is the school business administrator for the Board of Education.
Evening.
So, um, I want to apologize. It's never a great look to start off any kind of testimony with an apology, but with the weather, my kids were home, I didn't get to the office, I don't have full-size boards, but I trust that you've all had a chance to look at the sets that we had sent in ahead of time. So I'm going to do my best to explain it to you the best that I can. We did submit back in November, and Mr. Vince was able to take a look at it. We did receive a letter from him in mid-January with taking no exceptions to the engineering plan. There were a couple caveats, which I'll get into in just a minute. But essentially, the project includes concrete sidewalk and curb, brick pillars, poured playground surface, ornamental fencing, lockable gate, plantings, and stormwater management. It's a deceptively simple project. The reason that we're undertaking the project at all is that the district did qualify for a grant from the state of New Jersey for a pre-K program. By September, there is a renovation project within the school that will be complete. It's actually probably be complete well before that, but enrollment for the pre-K program will start in September. This playground is directly adjacent to where that program is, and it is a code requirement by the state of New Jersey that you provide a pre-K playground with proper equipment for that age for any pre-K program. So it's kind of an extra phase of the renovation project that's already underway. As I said, it's going to be, if you're familiar with the middle school, high school site, there is a bus drop-off or a parent drop-off loop right off of Hamilton Avenue, not Harris Town. That's right where it's going to be. There's a school sign there, there's a couple conifer trees there. Those are all remaining, and we're almost tucking our playground right in behind that area. The playground itself is about a 30-by-50 stamp. It's about 1,500 square feet. The reason for that, again, Department of Education code requires 100 square feet per student that would be using the playground at any one time. Then they further say that a preschool classroom can have 15 students in it, 15 times 100. That's kind of where we get the size. So we're trying to basically meet the minimum code requirements and make it so it's not an affront to the community. We know that Harris Town is a very well-traveled road. You'll be able to see this playground from there, and I will speak for Mr. Canelus, but something like a chain-link fence enclosure around it was never in the cards. There was always a push to marry this to the site. And so what we're really doing is trying to respect the nature and the character of the site, but still bring it updated and be code compliant with the project that's already underway. Since our initial submission in November, we have performed geotechnical engineering and ground penetrating radar. We knew that there was a stormwater line in the area, we knew that there was a gas line in the area, but we never want to just trust our record mapping, and so we always encourage the district to entertain the GPR at their own cost. Sure enough, the two utilities that we thought were in the area are there. They're slightly modified. Because the gas line is not where our record map showed when we submitted the plans to you, we knew that we'd have to be revising the design a little bit. And I believe, I don't want to speak for Mr. Vince, but I believe Edwards Engineering had called you at some point to tell you that the plans would be revised a little bit from the initial submission. And I believe either in your email or your letter, you had mentioned that as long as you received the updated calculations for review prior to issuing the permit, that would be acceptable.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, very quickly about the utilities. We knew that there was a gas line. Based on where it actually is, we think we can avoid it altogether. So on your plans there, it mentions about relocating the gas line a little bit. We think we can actually avoid that whole scope of work. And then you'll see there is a stormwater line that's pretty accurately represented. It does cross the perimeter of our playground in two locations. With the fence enclosure that we're proposing, it's a brick pier system with aluminum handrails in between, and so it's not a spread footing throughout the whole perimeter of the playground. We don't see any conflict. That stormwater line's about five, six feet underground, and the point where it crosses, it would just be our concrete curbing. That's the natural buffer between the grade and the poured surface. That's only 18 inches deep, so we don't think utilities are going to be an issue. Speaking of stormwater management, and I apologize if I'm getting too into the details, but it's very hard when I don't have a visual to point to. Speaking of stormwater management, we are providing an underdrain system for this playground. It's not a simple throw mulch on the grass and let it go. The underdrains will feed into a 12-inch manifold. There's two cleanouts that in your plans are located in the playground surface. In the updated plans, they're actually outside of the playground surface. That 12-inch manifold ties into a storm chamber, which in layman's terms is almost like a horizontal drywall. It basically slows down the flow of water throughout. That ties into another 18-inch pipe, another inlet, which, excuse me, which eventually ties into the stormwater line. The brick piers that I've been mentioning are going to be 18 inches by 18 inches by 6'3" high. The reason we did that is we first thought about a four-foot fence, and then I saw my children jump over my couch at home, and we had a conversation at four foot. It's probably a little too low for four and five-year-olds. So it will be a six-foot fence system. The brick's going to match the building beyond. It's going to be capped with a similar cast stone. If you can envision the school, there is some kind of banding of a limestone or a cast stone on that. We're gonna pick up that language. The gate will be lockable. It will be arched, again mimicking some of the arches on the building facade. And again, very, very standard. Four-inch spacing on the spindles, 6' high, either bronze or black. That hasn't been determined. We are providing accessible means to the playground. It's a very small extension to the existing sidewalk system, so if there was somebody that needed accessibility towards it, we would obviously provide that. We're also planning on replacing some of the adjacent sidewalk that's in disrepair or might become damaged when we install the storm chamber, things like that. So that'll all be wrapped up into the scope of work. Finally, the playground surface itself, it's a poured rubberized polyurethane, or I should say a rubber urethane. It's a five-inch base and then a half-inch topcoat, so it's a two-layer system. It will meet the GMAX requirements, which are the impact requirements that are legislated. And literally, it's poured and then traveled into place. So again, that goes to a flush concrete curb with the fence on top of it and tied in with the brick piers. The playground itself, including the fall area, which is 6-foot perimeter all the way around the playground on all sides, it's about a 26-by-26 footprint inside of our 30-by-50 playground. And so we're well oversized in terms of the amount of equipment that will be in there for the play areas. There's gonna be plenty of room for the students to run to play, as well as climb up these platforms, climb up the steps, a couple interactive panels, a slide. But fairly typical materials that you would expect: steel, aluminum, HDPE plastics, and PVC. All the equipment will have full footings. Again, none of the utilities are in the area where the equipment is, so we don't have any concerns with underground issues. And then finally, the last thing, brick is a pretty austere surface. We're going to actually rotate each of those piers to make sure that there's no sharp corner inside of the playground. And then even on top of that, if you imagine an 18-inch radius around the brick pier, that poured surface will actually not come into contact with the brick. We're actually going to turn that semicircle into a planter, put some shrubbery in there to soften the visual a little bit, but also give some kind of last-ditch effort for fall protection if somebody was headed for an accident. With that, I guess I would open it up to any questions or clarifications I can provide.
Do professionals have any comments on the project?
From an engineering standpoint, really don't have any comments or issues. When they finalize the design for the drainage, we'll take a look at it, but in general, it does meet the stormwater management regulations. And I know there were some technical details about where the roof drains were coming out, but I spoke to them, and we'll get it resolved before construction.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Very thorough presentation. Thank you. The question I would have, is any change to lighting being proposed?
No. So this would be used during the school day only and then lock-off hours.
Just out of curiosity, are you required to have any part of the play structure accessible?
The...
So I remember hearing that was a recent change.
Yeah, so the answer is yes. With some of the panels and stuff that we have in place, that's the accessible portions of it.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
I did have one. That surface is porous, right? The rubber surface?
Yep.
Calling your attention to your plans, page C 5.0. I realize that the fence is an ornamental fence, but the standard pillars that you have, they go three feet below grade?
I believe we're at 18 inches.
Eighteen, okay. Does that qualify as a bower? Would it stand up to a vehicle impact?
To a vehicle impact? Not at 18 inches. And I'm just looking for the...
It actually shows in the detail, the pillars are three foot deep?
Yeah.
The pillars?
The brick piers are. So if a vehicle were to go inside of it, the brick piers would stop it, but I think they're spaced wider than a vehicle, so.
Yeah, because my concern is the high volume of vehicular traffic in that area. You have one of the most heavily traveled county roads, and if you've ever stood outside of any of our schools and watched people drive...
I've had the pleasure.
Yeah. Just my concern, this is very close to the horseshoe of the school. It's very close to Harris Town Road. It's very close to Hamilton Avenue. What type of protection will you have if a vehicle leaves the travel course near the roadway and strikes the fence? It's not gonna stand up to a vehicle.
Right. I mean, practically speaking, from, coming from Harris Town, I'm just looking at C 1. The area where our playground is is kind of in the middle of the sheet. It's behind a tree. It's behind a sign. It's not to say that it can't happen. I completely understand your concern, but I think it'd be unlikely that it would be somebody from Harris Town. From the bus loop, I think that's typically slower vehicular traffic, but I understand your concern.
We've, I mean, in our central business district with the angle parking, we've had people pull into the angle parking and end up parking in the middle of a store. So I'm just concerned more so, I realize there's a bit of a way from Hamilton Avenue. You also have your school sign there and stuff like that, but my concern is the vehicles, not in Harris Town, but the vehicles on Hamilton and vehicles coming through the horseshoe, that there needs to be some sort of protection there. If not a bower, maybe a guardrail?
We can definitely take that under advisement. Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the offset to the sidewalk there, and it does, to your point, get relatively close to the boundary.
It's very close.
Yep.
Could you turn it so it's parallel to the horseshoe road?
Uh, we, yes. The gas line that you see on C 1.0 is not actually in that location. It's actually a little bit planned south. But that may be an opportunity if it was rotated to be parallel to the access road, and then basically you would limit those, that baller protection to the short side, not the long side of the playground. But that's something that we can discuss with the district.
I think it's very much worth the discussion. I just, that was the first thing that jumped out at me with the plans, especially if my owner, yours on the job, having directed traffic out there and been a firsthand witness.
And I know the district's director of security has reviewed these plans, too. I don't believe he had that specific comment, but we'll obviously keep him in the loop and discuss some of these things with him.
Okay. I could also make my traffic safety officer available if there are any questions. He's a graduate of the Rutgers School of Traffic Engineering for law enforcement officers, so he may have some good input for that.
Can I ask Mr. Canelus a question? I don't know the format. Have you had issues in the past with people running the curb during dismissal or something like that?
None in my experience. We have not had people pop the curb.
In my experience, which goes back, 39 years, I will tell you, we have.
It is a horseshoe. You'd be coming off the curb. I would think it would be at a very high speed, but could happen.
Thank you.
Any other board members have any comments or recommendations?
Hi. Thank you for coming tonight, and I appreciate your note about it being a snow day and having the kids at home, because I did as well. I tried to work from home, unsuccessfully. The intended use for this playground is the third, three- and four-year-old pre-K disabled, correct?
That is correct.
So my question, I have two questions. What landscaping do you have contemplated for outside of the fence for privacy purposes?
For outside of the fence, none.
None. Would you consider adding foliage or some type of, anything that would block view of the children that are in that playground?
From specifically Harris Town or just all the way around?
I would say all the way around.
That wasn't really something that had been contemplated. I think having the children be able to see the surroundings, they would never be there unattended. The concern is security.
I'm not worried about that. My children were both in the pre-K disabled program when it was at Coleman. I'm just speaking off of experience. And going with that thought that these are three and four-year-olds, the gate that you have, is it locked all the time? Like, will the teachers have a key to open up the playground? It will be shut behind them so the kids won't?
Right. We're actually in the middle of specifying what that might look like now, but kind of what we've landed on is a key turn with a pin into the ground, so you'd have to pull up the pin and push.
Perfect. Because I know my kid was a runner, and at Coleman, there was no fence in playground. They were just let loose, and that could often be a problem. But back to that fence about privacy, my concern is that you have three and four-year-olds who are about this tall on the same campus as middle school and high school students who are triple their size. I would think it would be a good idea to have some type of privacy element, so those children aren't feeling intimidated. I mean, this is their first go at school, their first time riding a bus, and it's a very emotional experience for them. And I would want this to be as smooth as possible a transition coming from Coleman to the high school, middle school, because that's gonna be a little bit, I think, not jarring for them, but it may be, may cause them to be inhibited when they enter the classroom afterwards.
So the idea of when the students would actually be using the recreational area would be when there's not the mass influx of students coming into the school or leaving for lunch or leaving for the day. The idea, as we're developing the program, is to really move the kids about the campus when the campus is at its quietest, so that we're not, you know, clashing our little ones with our big ones, because I have a hard time getting through the high school hallways during the middle of the day, seeing me in. So the idea is certainly to offset the periods that they have versus the periods that our older students have. So I don't think that there would be many crossings outside for them.
Now, when the students enter the school, will they be entering through the front door in the horseshoe?
No, they're gonna be entering through that door closest to Harris Town Road, actually by the entrance to the playground, right?
Yeah. So if you have the plans in front of you and you see kind of where we're adding that sidewalk extension, if you kind of follow that up to the door that's kind of in the middle of the plan, that is the pre-K door. So you go there, it's a split level, half a level down into the pre-K.
Okay, perfect. And lastly, with the chief's questions about security, will there be any type of cameras installed to prevent, or to, not to prevent, but to hopefully prohibit destruction of that property? We know that sometimes our Glen Rock High School, Middle School students tend to get a little ornery towards the end of the school year, and I would like to see this asset protected.
I don't want to tell you 100% positive, but I do believe we have a camera located outside that would actually hit that area, being that it's an area that we would want eyes on, even when there wasn't a playground there. So we can certainly report back on that.
And then my last question, I'm sorry. I'm just thinking about all the fields and the updates that we've done. Is there any law that states there needs to be a diffusator within the confines of that playground?
Not that I've come across.
Okay, because I know we have them at our playgrounds at Memorial, at Faber, more for the team sports. I was just wondering if that would be another consideration.
We can certainly look into it and talk with the district.
Excellent. Thank you. No more questions.
Any other questions or recommendations?
So this playground is not restricted to the children that are attending classes, right? It's also usable for the public?
I believe after school hours, it's not going to be locked, and it would be usable by the community.
So the public can use it? And the age range of these children are roughly what?
Three and fours.
Three to four years?
Three-year-olds and four-year-olds, yes.
Okay. And what will the hours be? Like, there'll be winter hours and regular summer, spring and summer hours for the playground to be opened?
I would imagine that the playground will be open year-round.
No specific hours?
Besides any other playground on school grounds are available to the community.
Did you say there won't be any lighting in that playground, even in winter? Like, it gets dark at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the winter.
Our use of that is during the day. I don't believe any of our playgrounds on any of our campuses are necessarily illuminated, so that was not something that we considered.
All right. And for, I guess, a community member, resident, that has children, grandchildren, want to use that playground, they would park where? In the same areas where the parking is for the school?
Mm-hmm.
If they're, can find a spot?
Correct. After school hours would be easier.
Couple more questions. Do you plan to install any type of security measures, like either personnel or, you know, considering the age of these youngsters, personnel or cameras in the playground so someone can monitor it from inside the building without being outside?
The cameras that we have that I believe hit that area are viewable indoors by our security force, and just on the top of the horseshoe, beyond that door, is where there are usually two security guards sitting. As we are still in many ways the planning processes, it would not be out of the realm of possibility that they would do a walk-by or a pass-through while the students are out there during the day. We're not, we're talking about three classes that are gonna be located at the high school, so it's not that we have a whole school full of children, so there won't be that many periods where they would be out there, and so we could certainly have somebody pass-through.
There'll be teachers with them when they're out there.
There will always be teachers with them. They will never be out there unattended.
I'm just worried just that they tend to age, it's all. I would think that you want to have some more type of security there. Will any outsiders be required to have like a guardian or a parent with the child? I don't know that kind of stuff.
Well, the playground would not be accessible during school hours by the community, right? Just as all of our field and our other playgrounds, when school is in session, those are the school grounds, right? So that wouldn't, there would never be our classes there with a community member after school. You know, the signage typically says that you are, you know, to be accompanied by an adult and that you're within the ages appropriate for the playground.
And then just to clarify one thing, too, this is not... And then, just to, to clarify one thing too, this, this is not what I would call a large playground. So, I think it only goes up to about thirty-four inches above the ground with the slide from there. So, I don't think you're going to be attracting even eight-year-olds to this playground. I think it's really going to be the people that have a direct guardian with them, and they might be there from three to four-thirty, you know, during twilight or something if they're walking by. But, um, it's, it's not a particularly large jungle gym or something like that. It's a couple platforms and a slide.
And just, uh, last question. I don't remember what the tree lines are like in that area, the foliage, the big trees, I don't remember. But during the summer, eh, you plan to have any overhead covering for that park?
So there are canopies as part of the equipment. The code says that you need to have twenty percent of the play surface covered, and I believe we have twenty-six percent covered. So, inside of our playground, the equipment does have a cover to it. The trees that are around it on site, they're maybe thirty-foot-tall pine trees and, and one kind of deciduous tree. So, um, there, there's some screen there, but again, as I had mentioned before, there wasn't really a, an active discussion yet about shrubbery or enclosing it in more than what was there, but it's certainly something that we'll discuss.
And the equipment material, I mean, I don't know, the dynamics of heat absorbed by plastic or metal or some other substance, you, you, you've thought about that?
Yeah, yeah, it's.
In the hot summer with the hot sun, those, those pieces of equipment can get pretty hot. I had an experience with that.
Correct, and I, I think that's where the shading requirements come in, that, that we're exceeding that. But a- as I said, it's a combination of, you know, metal platforms, PVC covered around the edges, some HEP, HDPE panels. It, it's equipment that's available through the state's cooperative purchasing agreement, and so it, it's kind of been vetted by the state of New Jersey already as safe. The manufacturer is, is a well-known supplier to school districts in the state.
And this goes without saying, the, the people who use that playground, whether it be students at the school, outsiders, they have access to bathrooms in the school, I imagine, right? No? Uh-oh. All right, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, and I think for security after hours, the school's locked down.
Okay, thank you. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
I, I have a question, or maybe just another comment. I mean, I know that you wanna make an asset like this available to the community, but I would be concerned about leaving it unlocked with the potential for teenagers going in and using the equipment or bringing things into that play area. You could end up on a Monday morning with broken glass bottles, medications, trash. How would that be managed or prevented? I mean, you're bringing three and four-year-olds who have special needs into this playground, potentially after a long weekend of football games and parties, and kids, they just get into mischief. Wouldn't you wanna leave it locked so that those kids are protected?
We could certainly consider that to, to your initial concern. Our custodial crew in the mornings walk the premises, making sure that they are safe for the arrival of all students. This would just be another area that they would need to inspect to make sure that it was suitable for children to be in there. I, a- also, I don't believe the students would be starting their day in, 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 in the, in the play area, so that would even give us even some more time to potentially do a, a, a very robust cleaning if there happened to be a particularly hard tailgate from that weekend before.
Are there any other comments? I, I wanna, I'd like to go on the record as saying, as a former parent of two students that went through that program, I would feel much more comfortable if this was not available to the general public and kept strictly for the use enjoyment and educational purposes of that particular subset. Let them have their autonomy, let them feel they have ownership over that space.
Is the board ready to list the recommendations for this project? I have some, um, the, um, we have recommendations about a guard rail.
Guard rail or bower?
Right, um, guard rail. Possible landscaping on the outside of the playground. A gate with a key turn with a pin, which was discussed. Having the playground be just for the, the actual students using it and not open to the public. We talked about, um, also security, but I think that goes with whether the playground is open to the public or not. And I think, believe that's what I have, a de-.
Defibrillator.
Yeah. Look, to look into that. Does anyone else have any other recommendations that we discussed?
I just have one question. For, for these recommendations, is this something that we should, as a board, be agreeing on unanimously? Or is this something just general guidance that most people support?
The way this board, I believe, has done in the past is in the form of a letter with a list of recommendations. And we can, the board, or the board can vote generally on these recommendations. It's under forty fifty-five D dash thirty-one, the board can make recommendations on this project to the applicant.
My only comment then on those recommendations would be on your second to last item about making it locked during off-hours and only available to students of our program. I would disagree with that. I think for these types of public amenities, they should be open to other students who would wanna use them at any, anytime. So I'm just noting that.
Okay.
And putting that as a, a question for that recommendation.
I have two, I have two things that should be requirements, not recommendations.
Sure.
Just the one is that our office should review the stormwater management prior to construction. And the reason for that is because it is a major development, and the borough under the, the state guide, the state regulations is obligated to review and make sure that they're reading the stormwater management, uh, regulations. And also that their maintenance manual, um, they have a stormwater manage maintenance manual, it's filed before any sort of certificate of approval.
Okay.
But again, that's just a state law.
So these are, yeah, these are requirements under state, state law. So we're gonna make the manual and the, um.
Just to review the calculations and the design.
Right, to review the calculations and design the stormwater management plan. Okay.
Do we vote on this one?
You can generally, as a board, say that this is what was recommended. It's not.
But just one, one clarification. The children that this is being designed for, uh, the, the, the pre-K group, is this special needs or just general?
It's a combination. Um, there are three classrooms down there. One classroom will be pre-K disabled. The other two classrooms will be integrated classrooms, which will have both Gen Ed and Special Ed students.
And the, is the equipment in there specific to special needs or is it general play equipment?
It's general play.
Okay.
And appropriate for the students.
Yeah, age-appropriate.
Okay.
So.
Do you want, just to vote on recommendations or no?
Yes.
So we need a.
So you call a roll on the, on the recommendations or?
You, we would need a, a motion to approve the recommendations, and that'll be in a letter form, not a resolution.
Do you hear, do you have a motion to?
I'll make the motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll second. Mr. King?
With the understanding that the one recommendation regarding the use of facilities for children outside of the program is, is not one that's unanimous, I approve the recommendations.
There a second? Oh, the mayor's second.
Oh.
So, Mr. Clinton, so Mayor Mariko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Chief Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Solowski? Oop, I keep skipping, I'm sorry, let me finish his line. Mr. Valero?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz Pizito?
I'd make the same note about the non-unanimous on that one point, but other than that, yes.
And Mr. Morley?
Yes, with the, with the same condition that Scott raised.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next item, next item on the agenda is the Glen Rock Public Library Elevator Project. The applicant seeks site plan approval for the installation of an elevator to provide complement accessibility to the lower level.
Hi.
Good evening.
Can you state your full name, please?
Sure. My name is Jeff Schlecht. I'm a principal at RSC Architects. Registered in the state of New Jersey, presented to multiple municipalities throughout the state.
I also wanna mention you're a former member of the library.
And I am also a former member of, well, president of Glen Rock as well as a, the, on the board of the Glen Rock Public Library. So, I'll begin. So, uh, uh, I'm here with the new director, Kristen, um, of the library, and we're here to just share with you the plans for the, what is the first phase of a long-term improvements for the library or in terms of vision plan. And that is a, an elevator addition. And I have just three sheets I've taken from the set that you have in front of you to share that. But the elevator will, um, we have on the one side the overall site plan, and then the more enlarged one. The elevator addition will be on the south or northeast side in the corner. So just as you're, uh, if you are coming from the rear entrance of the library in the parking lot, it'll be to your right-hand side of the existing entrance. We will be removing that stair that brings you down to that sort of mid-level sidewalk area, right in that corner, so that landscaped area that will be displaced. It's a, just a simple elevator addition, and then we're gonna be replacing the stairs around that elevator. They will, those new stairs will be covered. It amounts to about a hundred and twenty square feet of, of increased coverage. So in terms of the submission to the, um, row engineer, there was negligible or de minimis as far as improvements. The next page that I will show you is the floor, the floor plans, oh, small on this, but it's basically just an elevator addition onto the interior vestibule that's there. We'll be enlarging that little vestibule area to give it a little bit better management. There'll be then a, a door placed at the archway that goes into the main circulation area. So we'll have a larger piece. And then that will also be a control point to allow the elevator to be utilized after hours if needed. And that could bring you downstairs to the lower level. We will be disrupting or doing some alterations to what is now a break lounge room, staff lounge, um, and connecting to the main corridor that's there to access the main meeting room at this point in time, but then future uses, uh, in, in terms of the, the future endeavors. And then, uh, the, uh, the doorway that is on the side entrance, that brings you up to that mid-level, that will be the exit for the, that area. At the top of that stairway, we will put controlled access on that so that that downstairs area can be utilized, you know, without encumbering the, the library during off-hours. As far as the look, we will be plating it in brick. The top of the elevator will have a decorative cupola, uh, similar to the cupola that's on the, the tower. And, uh, as I said, we'll have the, the stairs going down, we'll have brick enclosures as far as its walls. Roof overhanged to cover that, and we will have lighting down the stairs. And then we will, um, reinforcing essentially the lighting that goes down the sidewalk out to Rock Road. That lighting will be wall-mounted and sort of shielded down just to the sidewalk area, low level. So it's not gonna be big spotlights up at top going down, it'll be just showing down. And otherwise, there's no other improvements as far as, or, or disruption or, or of the plaza or the, the, the planter or anything else that's there. And that is our elevator addition.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I just have one. Is the elevator big enough to get the standard-size EMS stretcher into it if you have to bring someone up?
Yes, yes.
Any questions by engineer?
No comment.
Any other comments or recommendations by the board?
Just one question. Do you, have you determined the color of the brick?
It will match the existing, so it's that red color.
Just a couple of questions I have. First of all, the project has been funded and, and it's ready to go pretty much, as far as funding?
Yes, uh, there's been two, uh, funding sources made, as, as I understand it. And our current budget is below that.
And how long will this project take to complete?
We are, uh, we are proposing an eight-month contract duration for the contractor. Biggest part of that is lead time for some of the components.
What is the capacity? Did you mention the, the capacity of the elevator? What is this?
Uh, it's a thirty-five-hundred-pound, uh, elevators go by, you know, by.
Weight.
Weight. So it's a thirty-five-hundred-pound passenger elevator.
How many people would be able to fit?
Generally, three.
Three?
Yeah.
And, uh, wheelchairs, stuff like that?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great project, uh, helping handicapped people and senior citizens get downstairs, that big meeting room. But, uh, I'm concerned about a couple of things. That vestibule, you're familiar with it, uh, now will be more, uh, active with people because the parking lot is in the back, people come in from the parking lot, they use that ma- basically as a main entrance. And then there'll be another set of doors, right? Those doors that, uh, you continue when you're going into the library, are they gonna be sliding doors?
It's gonna be autom- automatic doors, sliding doors, yes. I didn't get into some of the details as far as the interiors, but, uh, yes, the, the, um, it will be a sliding door going in, so when you come in, it'll slide open, so that'll keep, maintain the circulation.
Okay, so that's what I'm driving at. You're gonna have people coming in from the parking lot. You're gonna have people exiting the library. You're gonna have people going into the elevator, some of them handicapped, some of them with wheelchairs. You're gonna have some activity in that vestibule. Now, my question is this, when I looked at the plans, I noticed that, uh, on the opposite side of the elevator, the other wall, you have a door going into the closet, correct?
Correct.
And that door, it seems to me, it's swinging inside the vestibule. Why would you have it swing inside? 'Cause you could have a lot of people activity, you could hit some, you know, somebody could by accidentally, somebody pass it by. Why, is it possible to have that door swing inside to the closet?
We, we could. It is, it's a, it's a service area, number one. So it's not a, a, a public space or an office or something that somebody is going to be coming in and out of at all times. Uh, it's very conventional to have your doors swinging out just from a safety standpoint, uh, to follow the path of exit.
But when it swings out, it could hit somebody walking by, right? So I mean, it's not a big deal or not for you?
It's, it's not, it's not an immediate concern. If it is something that is highlighted, it's certainly something that we could.
Uh, the other question I have, again, being that now the traffic will be increasing in that area, in that vestibule, I'm not sure, I don't remember if, um, the people that work in the library itself at the main counters, if they have a visit, a, a, you know, visibility toward that area. And I'm wondering, wouldn't that be a good place to place cameras and somebody be able to progress, uh, uh, cover them from the, uh, where the workers, uh, where the library workers are? So they could actually see the transactions, what's going on in that area?
So, um.
Is that possible?
Uh, um, based on experience of going to the library there, that is the primary entrance, the. Based on experience of going to the library there, that is the primary entrance, the parking lot is in the back. I would say the great majority of the people utilize the library are coming in and out of that entrance already. The vestibule currently is smaller than what we're going to be resulting in. And that entrance and vestibule is in plain sight of the circulation.
And also, if somebody used the elevator and goes to the basement, the people that are working upstairs, they lose sight of that person, pretty much. So if cameras would help them keep some security in that area, I believe. And there was another question I had concerning, the, the fire department is aware of this? I guess they, they had no comments to you as far as the elevator and nothing?
Uh, we have not submitted it to the fire department, no, but we certainly can.
You plan to or no?
We certainly can, yes.
That's all covered by UCC Construction. That goes through the Fire Subcode by UCC Construction.
The project will be reviewed by the local building department, which does include fire safety as well.
And the outside entrance, the concrete area, we have staircases going down to the basement? Is that, that's flood, the flooded area, that area floods?
You're, I'm sorry.
You plan, you plan to put a roof? The outside, the back? You plan to put a roof someplace, right?
This side entrance, where am I? By the, the air conditioning?
Yes. You plan to put a roof there?
So that, that is an existing stair.
Yes.
That, its drains do get inundated because it is not covered. As part of this project, we are proposing to, to cover that.
But you think the, because it floods because it's not covered or floods because the drains are not working properly?
Well, it, the drains get overwhelmed by the direct amount of rain that is, is brought into that area.
All right. I mean, you've checked the drains to see if they just need to be cleaned or anything like that?
The, the times that there were issues with it, we had them cleaned and that resolved it. So they are clear, it's just that they get inundated by the...
Right, so with the roof, it'll make it better?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
I think it's a very good project.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Does anyone else have any?
I, I just want to make a comment on the record. I want to thank you, Jeff. For, this is like six to eight years of work that you've put into this project specifically. I was there with you during many of the initial iterations of this. And I think you've come up with a fantastic, well-thought-out, well-planned project that this entire borough is very proud of. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
So, the recommendations that I heard from the board are... The door swinging inside, into the vestibule, that's just going to be looked at, whether...
We can reverse it.
Okay, just how, that's just going to be reviewed. Possible cameras in the vestibule. And the, the drains will be covered, but that's already in your plans, I believe. And that's all I have.
I believe the one comment was about having the cameras downstairs so you can see who's in the basement, see who's, who's there.
That's another, the cameras in the basement.
I think that would be more of a concern than the vestibule, which has a direct line of sight from the circulation desk. You could see that, but someone goes in the basement and you're not aware of it. I, I can, to me, that's a concern.
Yeah, they could monitor from there.
All right then, do we have a motion to...
Wait, hold on, before we go there, bringing up people downstairs potentially falling and getting hurt. I don't believe there would ever be an is, an instance where someone would just be going downstairs, just to go downstairs. They're going down to attend programming. So when they get to the bottom of the elevator and they get off, there will be someone there to escort them into the room, to, you know, whatever programming is going on downstairs that evening or during the day. So I don't think it's going to be a situation where unattended people are wandering the library.
Is that always active downstairs?
Only when there's programming.
I was going to say, it's, I mean, I'm just, I was just a patron at this point. But it is, it's primarily a program space and people that are down there are for that, whatever program, so it's not...
So would the elevator not be operational when downstairs is not occupied?
I, that's not the intent of the, or how to manage that elevator.
Yeah, so my concern would be you're not having a program there, but someone gets in the elevator and goes downstairs and you're not aware of it while there's no activity down there.
The potential is there. I mean, I could add, just having been on the board, the long-term vision is to have all of those items as far as security and, and the IT and the AV down there. This is the first step of that long-range vision. And the funding that was, you know, made available, which was taking advantage of what we can, and this is what we're able to do.
So just, so the downstairs is not accessible to the public or the public's not allowed to go downstairs except for when there's programs going on? Is that...
I would, I was going to say...
So currently, our staff is extremely aware of the downstairs area and actively make sure people don't go down there without programs happening. We have a very, we have a system in place for programs to make sure we have everybody go down at the same time and everything like that. And usually, that, that has worked really well and the staff are very, very aware of that and have actively, you know, taken steps to make sure that patrons are also aware of that. So I, I understand the concern, but we definitely will keep that in consideration as we go forward, especially with the new elevator.
I was just wondering if that's like currently a policy that...
Yes, it's currently, currently a policy that only when the meeting room is in use should you be going downstairs because otherwise, there's really nothing down there of interest.
Okay, then, do we, do we have a motion to support the recommendations?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mayor Mariko?
Yes, but without the recommendations. I think they've had everything covered.
Just, just so we're clear, these are just recommendations, not conditions to approve.
Right, just recommendations.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Chief Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Bolero?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz Pizito?
Yes.
And Mr. Morley?
Yes. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
So last month, we were talking about maybe setting up a couple committees. One was bylaws. I think that was pretty much, we were all in agreement on that. Scott, you made that recommendation. Is Sue here?
No.
Okay, she expressed an interest in being on that committee also. Scott, would you like to be on that committee?
I'm going to pass at the moment.
Okay.
Because I'm not quite sure how much longer I'm going to be here.
Oh, okay, okay.
What, what do you want? If I wanted to be on the bylaws committee?
So I'd like to, you know, just ask, what's, what's the mechanism for creating a committee of the planning board?
That's the... Yeah.
Okay.
All right, sure. I mean, you can vote on...
Could it just be appointed or volunteer or you have to...
How, yeah, how do we create it? Who, who appoints?
The committees? You can, you can be appointed. So you can, I mean, lots of times there aren't subcommittees with planning boards, but if you choose to have them, then you can. So were you, what committees were you thinking of? The bylaw committee?
Bylaw, and I think, Mayor, I think you mentioned that there might be a need for a committee of the planning board for housing or... Ed, did you suggest that? I don't remember. And maybe also the idea of sustainability committee possibly for following up on...
That's her committee. I have my own committee through the governing body.
Okay.
Not the, we'll meet through this board.
Okay, okay, okay.
I'd be interested in a housing committee if you need somebody.
Yeah, that would be something the mayor would appoint and create that committee. That is to formulate or review any of the information that we're preparing for this board. And we'll be coming back to you with the recommendations. But just keep in mind again, as we had talked about last year, there is a deadline of June 30th by which we have to have a housing element in fair share plan that's going to be part of the master plan. So we'll be coming back to you way before then in order to talk about a draft and then from that, what a final plan would be. That final plan is acted on like a master plan, where you have to have a public hearing in order to review that document. And then this board would, would adopt that document as an element of the master plan. And then the governing body would then review that document to endorse it. That's the phrase that's used. So we can then send it down to DCA for certification.
All right, so no, there's no committee of the, of the planning board that's necessary for that?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Ed, I'm wondering if I could ask you a couple of questions. I don't know if this is appropriate, Mr. Chairman, but concerning the analysis that you made with the President perspective need?
Yes.
Yeah, wait.
Can I, can I ask a couple of questions?
I don't have a debate anymore.
I know you presented it to...
Yeah, why, why don't we, we could discuss off...
Discuss what?
Off ca, off the...
Offline?
Off the record.
Off the record.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Like after the meeting is called.
Likely the reason is, is because that was filed as a declaratory judgment as required by the state. And so therefore, that's an official legal action, I would say. That's why. I'm just explaining why.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so we could just...
But this is, I think this is important, what I want to show you.
Okay.
Maybe to you, not to me, but...
Yeah, we could discuss. We have the bylaw committee that you can form, that you can select.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll speak with the members separately and see who might be interested in doing that.
Keep in mind, we want to keep it under enough people have a, to avoid having a quorum.
I think three is the limit, right? So I know Sue Triforce is interested to be on the bylaw committee. Anybody else interested?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Mayor. And we need one more person. Sure, I can be. Okay, okay, there we go. We have the committee. Ed, I was, I wa, I was thinking about, I just wanted to follow up with you about, you know, something that could follow through on the hazard vulnerability study. If there's something, maybe a committee, I think you mentioned maybe a sustainability committee that might...
Yeah, I was saying, I, I believe we talked about this at the last meeting where you were saying, okay, we have some recommendations in there. How do we use those and how do we move those forward? There's two options. You could do a subcommittee of this board in order to talk about them. Or, and/or, I can come back to the board with a list of what those were and the board, the full board can discuss it as well. So you can do it one of two ways. And I would defer to the attorney if that sounds appropriate.
Okay, maybe we'll think about that.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, if you look on page 53 is where they start some of the recommendations in the hazard vulnerability study.
Any other issues, Ed? Any members of the board would like to raise?
Yes, I don't know if this is our area, but it's something I, I just wanted to throw out there for general discussion. In reviewing the, we got the zoning board summary of board action. And the one thing that I noticed as a couple of entries is the, what, 432 Grove Street, which is a very, very large parcel of multiple uses of land that is just kind of a no-man's land. It, it, there's commercial, there's residential, there's flood zones, there's PSE and G, there's... I know we've struggled with what exactly the purpose and use of that land is. And is that something that the planning board has any involvement with or is that more the zoning board?
Well, years ago, I guess, there was some discussion from the previous zoning officer about changing the zone. I guess at the time, there was a letter of recommendations. Council at that time, I guess, chose not to consider that at the moment. So right now, the zoning board is reviewing an application for commercial use. It's his, the person's residence and commercial use, and that's currently in front of the board. Next Thursday, they should be doing their final portion of presentation. It's been in front of the board for a year. It's the same application.
Okay.
So that determination, there's already one that was permitted for commercial parking. That lot does not have any structure on it. So this is a residence mixed with commercial parking and running his business.
And the old commercial structure is still empty there, right? The old grassy equipment?
Yes, there's some storage in it, but it's not actively used, yes.
So, so it has to run through, of course, with zoning before?
Correct, yes. Hopefully, it'll finish next week and the public will comment. It'll probably have to carry into March for the public's comments on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
I will say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Members, please turn off your mics.